Mr. Mayor, we are ready when you are.
Yes. Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the special meeting tonight, Monday, May 16th, 5:30 p.m. Going to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Goethos?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Here.
Mayor Bonilla?
Here. Thank you very much. Okay, so, welcome, everybody. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be here in person and still participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, there are three options to sign up to speak. One, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. Two, sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber. Or three, scan the QR code to sign up. The code is located on a sign at the back of the chamber. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via telephone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay, well, now, we're off to the regular business. Item one of the study session is potential ballot measures, voter opinion survey results, and I think we have Samantha Weigel here to speak with us about that.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Bonilla. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Samantha Weigel. I'm the city's communications manager. Dr. Timothy McClarney, president of True North Research, is here with us via Zoom, and he will be presenting the results of our voter opinion survey. And of course, our finance director, Rich Lee, and city attorney Prasanna Rasi are also available for any questions this evening. So, for a little bit of background, we have been discussing the city's finances and potential revenue enhancement options for several years now, including as recently as in April, when council directed staff to proceed with surveying likely voters for the November election. The council has also been reviewing the city's budget, which was originally expected to be significantly impacted by the economic impacts of the pandemic. Due to our fiscal sustainability plan to reduce expenditures, one-time federal stimulus funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, and plans to temporarily use rainy day reserves, we now anticipate our budget will be able to cover core services at existing levels. However, council and the community have identified a number of priority projects for which we do not have identified funding. This includes almost $90 million for the recreation facility strategic plan, funding for road maintenance to sufficiently support the paving program and prevent future failed streets, and a number of other items listed in the agenda report. Following council direction, the city again hired True North Research to conduct a split poll on two options: either a quarter cent sales tax increase or changing the city's real property transfer tax to a tiered structure. Either of these would be a general tax measure, which would support the city's general fund, would require a majority of a voter approval, and must be presented during a regularly scheduled election. Here's how the city of San Mateo's sales tax rate compares to other cities locally in our county. So, as you can see, we're kind of right in the middle there. And then, for real property transfer tax, we surveyed on two options for potential changes. The city currently has a flat rate of one-half of a percent for all properties regardless of their value, which has been in effect since 1977. It's important to note, this is a one-time tax that is only paid when a property is sold or transferred. It is not paid annually by owners, and it is customarily split by the buyer and seller. Staff explored potentially changing this to a tiered structure and looked at properties sold or transferred in 2021 to estimate what that could look like. The first option was to create tiers where properties sold for under $2.5 million or less would not experience any change in the tax rate. And then, you can see the breakdown. For properties that are sold for between $2.5 million to $5 million, there would be a quarter percent increase, bringing it to three-quarters of a percent. And properties sold for over $5 million but less than 10 would have a half of percent increase, bringing it to 1%. And then, those sold for over $10 million would have a 1% increase, bringing it to We also looked at a second option of setting the lowest tier at $3 million. And again, based on 2021 data, almost 95% of properties that were sold during that year sold for less than $3 million. So, next, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McClarney, who will present the results of our voter opinion survey.
Thank you, Samantha, and good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tim McClarney with True North Research. We are a firm that's, in addition to having the privilege of working with the city on past community surveys and voter surveys, we've also worked on over 1,200 research studies for public agencies around the state. And about half of the work that we do these days is what we call revenue measure feasibility studies, like what we're going to be talking about here today, where the goal is to understand if it's feasible for an agency to move forward with some type of tax measure, and if it is feasible to help them understand how they might go about structuring that measure in a way that it's consistent with the type of measure that their community is interested in supporting. I welcome questions from council as I go through the presentation or at the end, whichever is your preference. And, there we go. I think we're back up and running on the presentation. And so, next slide, please. So, before we talk about the actual results, it's helpful to take a quick moment to review the purpose of the study, or why cities go about doing this type of research, as well as the methodology for how we went about conducting the research. In terms of the purpose, I see these studies as really trying to address three overarching objectives. The first is to answer that basic question of, is it feasible? And what I mean by that is, if you, as a council, were to choose to place a measure on upcoming ballot, does it have a reasonable chance of success? Sometimes, the answer to that question is no, right? That we look at the results, and we just don't see that there's really a path to get you from where you are today to where I think you would need to be to have a reasonable shot at success on Election Day, and if that's the case, I'll be the first person to tell you that. When we do find that it's feasible, that second bullet kicks in, which is to understand how could you go about structuring a measure in a way that it's consistent with the type of measure that your community is interested in supporting? There's a lot of components to a tax measure. There's the, you know, there's the funding mechanism itself. In this case, we tested two different versions of sales tax, as well as a real property transfer tax. There's the rate that's associated with it. There's the question of what types of services or facilities would be funded, what types of accountability provisions would be part of this package. And so, there's a lot of decisions that ultimately council would have to make before you place this measure on the ballot that the survey can help guide. And then, finally, that third bullet around information communications is important. I'm a big believer that if a public agency is going to take the step of placing a measure on the ballot and asking voters to make a decision about an important policy matter like this, it's really incumbent upon that public agency to educate voters about the question you're asking them to answer. This doesn't mean advocating up or down, right? You're not saying vote yes, vote no. You're simply giving them the facts and the information that voters need to be able to make a well-informed decision. So, next slide, please. In terms of the methodology, survey was conducted in late April, early May of this year. And normally, I don't dwell on the date, but as you're well aware, a lot has changed in the past four or five months in terms of international conflict, in terms of runaway inflation, concerns about high gas prices, still have the pandemic with us, right? All of these things, I point that out because all of those factors are baked into these results, right? So, we don't have a situation where we did the polling, and then, three weeks later, all of a sudden, gas prices spiked or inflation hit a record that people didn't know about. You know, all of these sort of challenging conditions were already in place at the time we did the poll, and so, they're sort of baked into these results. In terms of the folks that we spoke with, we wound up speaking with 678 individuals who are what we call likely November 2022 voters. These are individuals who, based on when they registered to vote in the city, the types of elections they participated in the past, as well as other demographics, we would expect to actually cast a ballot in this upcoming November election. We use what's called a stratified and clustered random sampling methodology, which I can get into particulars of it if you like, but suffice to say for now that what it does is it guarantees us that at the end of this process, we have a sample of 678 individuals that is representative of that likely November 2022 universe on all the dimensions that we know are related to how voters tend to vote on tax measures. So, things like age, gender, partisanship, household party type, all these things that are usually solid predictors of how people tend to vote on these measures, we have controlled for that in our sample so that our sample matches that November 2022 profile. Because the city was interested in looking at both a sales tax and a real property transfer tax, we use what's called a split sample approach, where we essentially divided the sample in half. So, a random and representative set of November voters received a version of the survey that addressed the sales tax and the sales tax only. The other 339 received measures that reflected a real property transfer tax in that version only. We do a split sample like this because research has shown, and election results have shown consistently, that if you try and ask the same person about two different types of tax measures, you wind up getting an artificially low read on whatever you present second. And so, by splitting it, we're getting a clean read on both of these different potential measures for the city. Once we had selected voters at random, we used three methods to recruit them. We used email, text, and telephone. We also allowed them to participate either online at a password-protected website or by telephone, whichever was their preference. They also had the option of taking the survey in English or Spanish, again, according to their preference. And now, because this was a random sample of 678 voters, it has what's known as a margin of error due to sampling. In this case, for questions that were answered by all 678, and there were a lot of questions in the survey that were common to both sides of the split, that margin of error is 3.7%. That means we can be 95% confident that the results we'll talk about today are within 3.7% of what we would have found had we spoken with all of your likely voters. For questions that are specific to one measure or the other, the margin of error for those are a little higher, at plus or minus 5.3%. Next slide, please. Okay, so, on to the results. This first slide here shows the answers to the question where we asked individuals to please tell us what they think the biggest issue facing the city is that they'd like to see the city address. But it's asked in an open-ended question, meaning that we simply asked them the question, and then, we're quiet. They got to tell us in their own words what they thought the biggest issues were facing the community. And then, we went back and reviewed those verbatim responses and grouped them into the categories you see here. So, affordability of housing or lack of affordable housing was the number one at about 25%. You had about 21% who mentioned concerns about growth and development as their number one issue, followed then by traffic congestion at 16%, and 11% mentioned something to do with crimes, gangs, and drugs. So, it gives you a sense of what's top of mind for your residents that they'd like to see some improvement in. Next slide, please. So, after that initial warm-up question, we get right down to business, and we present to voters what we call our initial ballot test. And the idea is, before we get any deeper into this interview, and we start talking in more detail about potential tax rates, we start talking in more detail about how the funds could be used, as well as arguments pro and con related to this proposal, we want to present to them a mock-up of what we think that 75-word ballot statement could look like and get their reaction. It is a really good gauge of where your voters are at on the natural with respect to this proposal. So, shown here is the 75-word ballot statement for the sales tax version. And as you can see, for the sales tax, it opens up by describing, you know, having a pretty good description of the types of general city services that would be funded in the city of San Mateo in those bullets. And then, it goes on to ask about whether they would support establishing a quarter percent sales tax that would provide approximately $6 million annually for general government use. So, this is structured as a legally compliant general tax measure. Next slide, please. So, here is the same 75-word ballot statement, but this time, it's for the real property transfer tax. One thing you'll notice about the real property transfer taxes, we can't be as explicit in the bullets about the types of services that could be funded, largely because with the tiered structure that the city was considering, much of the 75 words gets devoted to describing how the tax is going to be levied on properties of different values. And you can see here that this 75-word ballot statement, as structured, set the bar at 2.5 million. If your property that was sold or transferred is under 2.5 million, there's no change to the real property transfer tax. And then, as you go up from there, the rate increase changes somewhat to the point where, for properties over $10 million, they'd experience a 1% increase above current rates. This measure, as structured, also would raise about $6 million annually for general city services. So, from a revenue generating perspective, the two measures we tested are comparable. Next slide, please. So, that was the 75-word ballot statements that we tested, and here are the results. So, at that initial ballot test on the left, we see that the sales tax checked in at 59% support. On the right, you see the real property transfer tax checked in at 51% support. So, in the state of California, for a general tax to be successful, you need a simple majority. So, for the sales tax version, we are nine points above that threshold that we would need to be successful. For the real property transfer tax, we are right there, pretty much on the bubble at 51%. Next slide, please. So, at this point, we transition to what we call our projects and services section of the poll, and here, we're trying to do two things. One is, we are now going to start to educate this respondent more about what these measures would accomplish by unpacking all the measures into all the different types of services and facilities that might be funded from a general tax measure. Recall that up to this point, they've only seen that 75-word ballot statement, and in particular, for the real property transfer tax, we couldn't really describe much about what the measure would be used for, because we were, you know, had to devote so many of the words to describing how the measure would be levied. So, here, we're giving them a much better idea now about what these measures would accomplish. And the other purpose for this question is, we want to get an understanding of all the ways that the city could choose to spend the money if it was a successful measure, which of these items sort of rise at the top of the list in terms of voters' priorities. And as you look over this list, one of the things that stands out is, overall, sort of public works and public safety are the things that voters place towards the top of the list in terms of how they'd like to see these funds spent. So, at the top of the list, maintaining parks, open spaces, and recreation facilities, including courts, fields, and playgrounds. You had about 86% of respondents say they would favor spending some of the money on that item. Then, followed that by local streets and roads and infrastructure, quick responses to 911 emergencies, providing fire protection paramedic services, and then, you know, broader set of road and intersection, sidewalk, and bike lane improvements to help better manage traffic congestion on city streets. So, it gives you an idea of how, although a general tax does not earmark funds for any particular purposes, this is how your voters would sort of prioritize their use. Next slide, please. So, if council were to choose to place a measure on an upcoming ballot, there will be an election cycle, and during that election cycle, you will have a lot of discussion and debate in your community about this proposal. You'll undoubtedly have some folks who will advocate on behalf of this measure, will stand up and tell their friends and their neighbors about why this is needed and why they should vote yes. You might also have some opponents, folks who step up and say, this is a horrible idea. We shouldn't be doing this, and here's why. For this survey to be a reliable gauge of the feasibility of a revenue measure, we need to be able to understand not only where your voters today, which was that initial ballot test, but what happens after they are exposed to the types of information they're going to be encountered during the election cycle. And so, we simulate that dynamic of community discussion during the election cycle by testing both positive and negative arguments in the space of the poll. And here, you see the positive arguments that were tested for the sales tax version. The list is a little different for the real property transfer tax version, and so, I'm showing them separately. And what you see here is that, you know, there are a number of arguments in here that actually get traction, the top one being that the measure's going to allow the city to keep up with repairs and make improvements to street, sidewalks, storm drains, facilities, and that the longer you wait to fix these things, the more expensive it's going to become. Second one related to 911 emergency response, and the third one was sort of a catch-all, talking about how by keeping the city safe, clean, and well-maintained, the measure's going to help protect property values and keep San Mateo a special place to live. Next slide, please. So, here is the list for the real property transfer tax, and what's striking about it is although a few of the arguments are different in this list than they were in the sales tax, the top three arguments are the same, right? It's the same three top arguments that, top three for the real property transfer tax, it is the sales tax. So, at this point in the poll, voters have now heard more about these proposals than they did when we presented the initial ballot test, right? We had a chance to talk in more detail about the services and facilities that could be funded. We had a chance to also convey positive arguments on behalf of the measures. And so, in the next slide, we circle to what we call our interim ballot test, where we come back, we present that same 75-word ballot statement, and we ask them, now that you've heard a bit more, where do you stand? And what you see is, with the sales tax version on the left, we have no change. We're still sitting at 59% support overall. For the real property transfer tax, support goes up about four points from where we were at the initial ballot test. I think in part, that increase is because originally with that 75 words, as I pointed out, there wasn't much information there about how the funds would be spent now, when compared to the sales tax ballot statement. And so, now that they've had a chance to kind of get up to speed on how the funds would be used, and as well as presented with positive arguments, they're up around 55%. So, that's up four points from where they were originally. Next slide, please. And then, we get to the negatives. And the idea behind the negatives is that I want to put my opponent hat on, and I want to pepper respondents with the kinds of, types of negative arguments that they likely encounter during the course of an election cycle, so that we can pressure-test their support for these proposals. How resilient is support for these measures in the case that, should you get some opposition, and should they be vocal about the reasons why voters should vote no on these measures? And so, you can see here that, you know, we test a series of negatives. They all test pretty similarly in terms of their impact, but the real question is, what happens afterwards? And that's the next slide. So, after the negatives, you can see that they do cool us down in terms of support, as you might imagine. For the sales tax version, we land at 54% after the negatives. So, it cools us down from the 59% where we started, but we're still landing about four points above that simple majority. For the real property transfer tax, which is on the right, the negatives cool us down to 49%. So, now, we're a little bit underwater when compared to that simple majority threshold that we need to be successful. Next slide, please. So, towards the end of the survey, if somebody was a no or a not sure on the real property transfer tax, we asked them whether they would support the proposal if, instead of applying to properties that were worth 2.5 million or more, the threshold were raised to properties that would be worth $3 million or more. And the way to read this pie is, at that final ballot test, we had 49% who were a yes when it was at $2.5 million threshold, and so, we can assume that they're a yes for a $3 million. And then, the rest of the pie shows what happened to everybody else in the survey. And what we see is, you pick up about 12% of folks who are either a definitely yes at that $3 million threshold, or a probably yes. And so, now, you know, that's significant. We're sitting at about 61% at this point in the poll. It's important to keep in mind, though, that these are educated voters at this point, right? This doesn't mean that if you just change the threshold from 2.5 million to 3 million at our initial ballot test, we would have been sitting at, we would have been sitting at 61%. Voters have heard a lot more by this point in the poll, so they have a better understanding of how that money would be spent. They have a better understanding about what a real property transfer tax is and the arguments pro and con. And so, this would be a very educated voter, but among those educated voters, we land at 61%. Next slide, please. All right, so, what does all this mean? I'm going to circle back first to that overarching question I mentioned at the outset as being one of the main motivators for why agencies do this type of work, which is, is it feasible, right? That if you, as a council, were to choose to place this measure on the November ballot, does it have a reasonable chance of success? My answer to that is yes, but a qualified yes, meaning it's going to require careful planning and execution, and, you know, the feasibility's a little different depending on what measure you're talking about. So, for the sales tax version, which is, which is among the measures we tested, certainly the most, the more feasible of the two, we, a lot of the things that we want to see in place for a measure to be feasible, we saw here. We saw solid, natural support for the proposed measure at that initial ballot test. Based just on the 75-word ballot statement, we had 59% support. All the projects and services that could be funded by that type of measure were popular. The positive arguments resonated. And importantly, at each point in the poll, when we circled back to a respondent and said, now that you've heard a bit more about this proposal, where do you stand? We see that all of those ballot tests are above the required simple majority required for passage, and that's even after we tested negatives. The real property transfer tax looks to be a bit dicier. We saw that right out of the gates with that 75-word ballot statement. We were sitting at 51% support, so that's just one point above the simple majority, and certainly within the margin there of the poll of, you know, being below that. The projects and services tested were popular, as they were for the sales tax. We did see that the positive arguments resonated, and that together, between the projects and the positive argument information, we got a boost up to 55% at that interim ballot test. However, once we hit that version of the survey with few negatives, support dropped down to 49%. And so, although, so, you know, that's concerning. And although, again, if you raise that threshold from 2.5 million to 3 million, it makes a difference with the respondents, quite a bit of difference with the respondents in terms of their support for a proposal. Again, it's important to remember that that was at a point in the poll where all respondents had already learned a lot more about the real property transfer tax than they had initially. So, I don't think that that 61% is necessarily representative of what we would see on an initial ballot test if we just put it out at 3 million. So, in terms of some of the challenges also that the surveys point out, number one, and I've hit this a little bit, but it's worth mentioning again, I think that one of the challenges with the real property transfer taxes is, a lot of that 75-word ballot statement winds up being devoted to explaining how the tax is going to be levied on different properties of different values, and it leaves less room in there to describe how the funds would be spent. And that is a kind of a disadvantage for that measure relative to a sales tax measure, all of the things being equal. We do see that in both cases, the negative arguments do get some traction, right? So, we need to be mindful of that. There's the potential in November of this year to have sort of the hyper-partisan election environment that we've seen in some of our other major elections in recent years. I think it's probably going to be less, honestly, in this November than it was in 2020, or it would be in 2024, simply due to the nature of this gubernatorial election and the fact that the recall was kind of handily dismissed by Newsom. So, I doubt we're going to see the same level of kind of hyper-partisanship this November, but it could, it could appear, and what that tends to do is drive a wedge between voters, depending on what your partisanship is like, and that can be a little bit of a struggle. And then, finally, it's important to keep in mind that there are some unknowns, right? Outside of this space, this poll, there are some things that we can't control, moving, and the city can't control moving forward towards Election Day, but could nevertheless create some headwinds, depending on how they, things play out. So, the trajectory of the pandemic, right now, we seem to be in a good place with it overall, relative to where we've been in the last few years, but we are seeing that cases are ticking up. Inflation, it's running at a 40-year high right now. We're hoping, obviously, that that comes down, but that remains to be seen, and is obviously related also in part to the international conflict, particularly with respect to gas prices. And then, finally, there's the possibility of competing measures on the same ballot, right? And all of those things can create some challenges for any local measure. They're not insurmountable, but it's meant to just keep these in mind when you think about what type of measure you're going to place on the ballot, because, you know, it could be, you know, a somewhat stormy election with all, with, depending on how some of those things play out. Next slide, please. So, final slide here, I just want to make a couple comments here, and observations and recommendations based on the poll results. The first is to remind us all that, you know, a poll like this is a snapshot in time. It is not a crystal ball, looking forward to Election Day and saying, you're going to get 59% on Election Day, or you're going to get 55% on Election Day. What a poll is- What a poll is, it tells you where you are today and it gives you a good sense of how your voters may react to the types of information they could, they could encounter during election cycle. But ultimately, what dictates what happens on election day isn't what your poll says today. It's everything that happens from this point forward. And I mention that because it's really important that number one, we make smart decisions about the type of measure you you put in front of your voters, right? So that is well aligned with what they've told you their priorities are and what they're comfortable with. And two, you got to put the work in. And what I mean by that is, uh, you know, if you're going to make the decision to place a measure on the ballot, that should come with a commitment to educating voters about the, you know, the proposal that's there and what the, you know, giving them the background information they need to make a well informed decision. Um, and so in terms of observations and and recommendations, a little further down, price tag. Uh, we saw that the quarter percent, which is the the increment that's available to the city at this point. Uh, that's doable and so uh, and what we tend to find anyways is that voters aren't really tax rate sensitive when it comes to sales taxes. So I I would say, you know, I'm comfortable recommending the quarter percent certainly. With the real property transfer tax, I think the poll results showed that at two and a half million dollars, it was uh likely not feasible, right? It's very, it's sitting right around the simple majority and it's susceptible to you know, negative arguments that could just push it uh below that. And so if you're considering the real property transfer tax, I would recommend raising that threshold to at least $3 million. That also again, though, comes with some education that's required so that voters understand that type of measure because it's a little different than what most voters are used to voting on. Uh, in terms of voters' priorities, these are the items there that they'd like to see uh be used with this measure, obviously with the general tax, you're not earmarking uh, the funds specifically for any particular services or or facilities. Nevertheless, um, you know, as you talk about this measure and you talk about the ways in which the money could be spent, these are the things that voters care the most about. And then, you know, in addition to the city's communication where if you're going to put a measure on the ballot, you're going to want to expand that conversation and start to uh, you know, give some non advocacy information to your voters, there should also be an independent campaign. Um, you know, to that way, this measure has a voice during that election cycle after council has placed it on the ballot. So that, you know, you have the ability to kind of talk and respond to some of these other you know, headwinds and and and, you know, perhaps, you know, competing measures and other things that could come up during that election cycle. You know, you're going to want to have some folks who would stand up and advocate on behalf of this proposal uh during that period. So with that, I end my presentation. Um, and I welcome questions from, well, it sounds like we're going to head to there and then I'll just take questions from council at the end.
Thanks, Tim. Um, just before we move on to questions and public comment, we did want to note a few other considerations that could impact council's discussion tonight. Um, Tim, of course, touched on the global and national conditions. Um, regarding a local ballot here in November, um, as I'm sure many of you have seen, the county is potentially discussing a parcel tax measure that would be to address climate change. And then we're also watching what's happening at the state level that could impact the city's budget. So staff is monitoring the potential for a reduction in what the city receives in excess uh ERAF funds. And then I just want to note that tonight is just a discussion. So we're not asking for a formal vote or anything, but we do recommend um, that at least four council members express support at tonight's meeting in order for staff to proceed. And then, of course, uh, finally, the type and extent of opposition may vary by each measure. So with that, I've just got one other slide about some questions um that we have for council and I'm happy to take comments. I'm sorry, questions.
Thank you very much. So back to the council for questions.
So I just have a couple of questions. Uh, thanks so much for the presentation, really appreciate it. When you say there's different um margins of error, did I understand you to say, Tim, that the um the 5.3 plus or minus is to the actual measure itself, whichever one was being proposed at that time, is that right?
Correct, so like the ballot tests for the respective measures, because we split the sample in half and some half got the sales tax, half received the real property transfer tax. The margin of error for those questions is at about plus or minus 5%. For questions that were common to both sides, right, they were answered by all 678 respondents. Those have a margin of error of the 3.7, I think it was.
Okay, so if the sales tax, it ended up at 54%, right? When all was said and done?
After negatives, correct.
Okay, so then you have a 5.3% margin of error, plus or minus, right?
Yeah, so the margin of error in that case, that final ballot test is within the margin of error of a simple majority.
Say that one more time?
You're you are, so if we're at 54% at that final ballot test and the margin of error is 5.7%. What that means is we can be 95% confident that the true value is either four, within 4.7% below or 4.7% above that 54. Um, and so the simple majority would be within the margin of error of the final ballot test.
If it's 54% and you could go down, would you say 4.7?
Yeah, so if you took the, if you took the, the the margin of error for the sales tax question, which is at uh, the five point, what was it again? Hold on, let me grab this because I don't have it up on the screen. It was sorry, get there in one second. It was 5.3%, right? So what it would mean is, so if our, if our final ballot test for the sales tax is at 54%, we can be 95% confident that the actual value among all likely November voters would be within a range of 54% minus 5.3 or 54% plus 5.3.
Right, so we could get below the threshold if it's the minus part.
If you were on the extreme edge of the margin of error, yes, you could be below. Now, having said that, I will also say this because, you know, I do hundreds of these a year. What you tend to find is, once you get beyond 200 votes, let's say in a survey, what happens is your estimate doesn't tend to change much, right? So that 54% might go to, as you start adding interviews, it might go to 55%, it might go to 53%. But the estimate doesn't change much. What happens when you're adding more interviews is you're just shrinking that margin of error around that estimate, right? So the fact that that we're at 54% at that final ballot test, yes, it's within the margin of error of the simple majority. But you know, it's also within the margin of error of almost 60%, right? So I'm, I'm confident that the true value is above that um, above that simple majority.
Got it, okay. Um, and then you may, you may not know the answer to this, but did we assess how fast property values have been going up? Because if we decide on whatever threshold it would be for the real property transfer tax, what are we looking at as how quickly that might go up?
I think that would probably be a question for Rich, the city's financial director, if he's on, I don't know if he's on.
Good evening, so the answer to your question is the average increase in assessed value for the city's uh properties has been a little bit over 5% um over the past seven or eight years.
5% each year?
Yes, on average.
Great. And then the threshold, if we were to do a bond, say for one of the items that seems pretty popular, which as I see it, park and rec facilities is pretty popular, the percentage, um, just so the public knows at home, the percentage required to pass that would be?
Two thirds.
Okay, so that's a higher threshold.
Yes.
Those are kind of the initial ones I had, thanks.
Tim, um, on the negatives, um, it's, it sounded like there were some negative arguments that had traction. Was it? Was it the combination of the higher gas prices, the the stock market in the recent weeks and and also what has been in the news about the city of San Mateo having um, a budget surplus of multimillion dollars and the county's surplus of multi billions of dollars, excuse me, the the state's surplus of 90 something billion dollars? Did that all factor into this or did that, did some of that come after these results?
So we tested a whole series of negative arguments in here. Um, we tested the argument that you can see there at the top, that the city's budget estimates show that it has enough money to continue providing services at their current level and we don't need to increase taxes. So that's one. Second argument there is sort of the classic argument against a general tax that there's no guarantees on how the funds can be spent, which means, you know, the city can divert money to pet projects and so government can't be trusted with tax dollars. That's your sort of, you know, I don't trust government argument. Third one there is is an argument about this is a bad time, right? We have the pandemic, we have inflation, we have high gas prices, people are struggling. So there's that element. The fourth one down was about, you know, the fact that that it's already an expensive place to live and especially for some of these particular subgroups and that passing a measure is going to make it even less affordable. And then the final argument there was the argument related to, you know, if we're not going to have a sunset on this, that the tax would last forever, right? It's never going to come off. So we kind of hit the, you hit respondents kind of from all angles in terms of anticipating what the types of negative arguments they might encounter during election cycle and how they would apply. That doesn't mean it's an exhaustive list, there could be others, you know, topics out there. But as you can see, um, you know, we weren't trying to pull punches here. We were trying to sort of figure out, you know, how much we could we could get uh support to erode in light of these negatives.
And the snapshot was just two weeks ago, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thanks, I think I have a question for our finance director. Because I just heard uh a a word used that I think I heard uh, one or two of our frequent public commenters use, which is surplus. And so I want to try and clarify definition a little bit just for our viewing public and I guess maybe for our own thinking. We all, I think, can agree, the state has a surplus. But my thinking is that the city received additional revenues beyond what it was expecting to receive. And thus were able to meet uh some of the needs that we had, that we had not planned on meeting because we didn't project that we would have those revenues. Is that what you would call a surplus or how would you define that, finance director?
Thank you for the question. Uh, I would define that as a short term surplus, so only for the current fiscal year. Our resources were greater than what we had anticipated. Uh, much of that comes from the American Rescue Plan Act, so $9.6 million uh that we was a part of the budget, but that contributes to the $13.6 million in surplus.
Okay, but it's not as if we were looking for things to do with that money. We had actual real needs that we were able to meet because we received those revenues, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. One other question I have. With the uh real property transfer tax, and if it were, I think I missed this, it's probably in a presentation somehow, some uh somewhere. Um, the real property transfer tax at 3 million. And I know that threshold and and everything is harder for that and it's not likely we would go there. But I'm just wondering, how much revenue might, annual revenue might the city be able to get if we were to somehow actualize that and get the voters to pass that?
So with
There we go.
Yes, so it'd be $5.7 million in additional revenues.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Those are my questions, that's all for now, thanks.
Through the mayor, I had a
Yes, please.
Follow up question. In terms of the wording about potential negative arguments, um, I think there's kind of a difference between saying, yes, we have enough to fund government at our current levels and and talking about what what San Mateans have been reading in the newspaper, that Councilmember Goltz has referred to as a 13.6 million dollar surplus. Um, I I would think that if if that line of attack was used by opposition, that would be a lot more effective than we just now currently have enough uh to fund our current government. Are there any thoughts? I know we can't go back and and try to predict what would happen, but I'm I'm just curious uh as as you see, as you've seen this before, if you got more specific because we have more information right now, how would that affect uh, the the negative sentiments towards the tax?
Yeah, I I think that, you know, the it, as I understand your your situation as a city, I I I think if that were the line of attack from opponents, you have a lot of good information to sort of, you know, where somebody could sort of neutralize it with basic facts, right? Um, you know, the the negative was put out there as a negative that you, you know, by your own estimates, you you have enough to keep providing services at their current levels. But at the same time, there's a lot of things that residents have expressed interest in for which the city doesn't have any funding, right? So um, the idea that you have some, a windfall or some surplus at the moment could be countered by saying, yeah, and you know, perhaps if we wanted to actually realize some of the improvements that we have in our park and rec master plan, for example, the price tag for that is X and that is well beyond whatever our surplus is this year. You know, if we want to actually step up our improvement of streets and roads over time beyond where we're at now, it's going to cost money for which we don't necessarily have budget for now. So I, you know, I my understanding of your financial situation is is, I don't see that as being a real liability from a, from a negative messaging standpoint, that's probably not where I would see an opponent getting the most traction.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other? Okay, we'll go.
We have ammo remotely.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lee, please.
Hi, um, thanks so much. Let's see, uh, I guess, um, I, I was hoping that um Mr. McClary, if you, or Dr. McClary, if you don't mind, just kind of reiterating um the recommendations so that we can, in summary, clarify where the data has led you. Um, and and I'll just kind of kick it off so to make sure that I have a clear understanding. So um, what I heard you say is that um, the that we have an opportunity here to raise revenue to meet um community needs that have been reiterated through actually two different statistically significant surveys, the poll and then also the community survey that was recently done. Um, that your position um as an expert in the field is that um, is that a recommending, for example, the sales tax measure will in fact um hold up and it and passes the test of feasibility. And um, and even some of the most um sort of, let's see, short sighted and erroneous takes on our surplus can be quote neutralized with basic facts. Um, and so you're, you feel comfortable, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but my um, my takeaway is that you feel comfortable making a recommendation for the um, sales tax measure. And and so
I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off.
Yeah, so I I just want to make sure that um, that I'm understanding where you got to.
Sure, and I I think what you described is is uh basically correct. You know, when you look at the support levels in the poll for the sales tax version throughout, um, you know, we stay above that simple majority uh at all points and most points well above that simple majority. Um, and you know, we feel that and knowing that you know, of all the types of possible tax measures out there, aside from a transient occupancy tax, which is basically a hotel tax, we tend to find the voters find the sales taxes to be the most palatable of the taxes that are out there. And so, you know, what I see in these poll, in these poll results is that if the city were to choose to go that route at a quarter percent, I think it's viable. Um, you still got to obviously do the things you would need to do in terms of educating voters about the city's position and and giving them, you know, the the information they need to make an informed decision. But I see that as being in in a good position to move forward and be successful on the November ballot. Um, I personally think the real property transfer tax, that's a steeper hill to climb here. Um, it's not as obvious what this this thing is when you're reading the 75 words. It's pretty wordy ballot statement. In order to make it legally compliant, you don't get to say as much in that 75 words about what the measure will accomplish and consequently, it's, it's kind of ripe for some confusion. Um, and we see a little of that in the poll. Um, at, you know, the support levels at the two and a half million mark were either barely above water or or in one case below water from the simple majority perspective. And, you know, if you were to choose to go that route, you'd need to raise that threshold in terms of the 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 types of properties it applies to and the, I think the bar I think the bar for educating respondents is going to be a lot higher, um, because it's not as obvious what this thing is. And like I said, it, there's a certain amount of confusion that's associated with it. And then, you know, I could get into it, but I also think that the real property transfer tax is probably a little more susceptible and a little more likely to provoke, uh, potential opposition, uh, when compared to the sales tax version. And so, you know, I'm not saying it can't be done, but it, it, it is a steeper hill to climb, right? And the chances of it being successful aren't, I don't think, at the same level as the sales tax.
Um, thank you. And, um, and Director Lee, if, if you don't mind, um, just chime in again, um, to remind the public, uh, what is the total, um, what is the total cost of our unfunded capital improvement projects that are on, um, that we have listed in, in our, um, in our business plan?
Thank you. The, excuse me, the unfunded CIP is in excess of $300 million.
Thank you.
Could you say that again, please?
The, the unfunded, uh, CIP for the city as of the current fiscal year is three, over $300 million.
Okay.
And, and do you mind just putting another number on the, um, the excess ERAF? Um, if, if the, um, the state formula were to change, um, to, uh, to actually like, well, was it to the, to the negative, like the, the worst possible, uh, worst case scenario, which, um, it seems like it, it had taken a turn further worse. So what was that, that, um, that number, annual number?
So the, just to clarify, uh, what's being proposed by the state is that the, the property tax in lieu of VLF shortfall, which for last fiscal year was in excess of $96 million countywide. Uh, our share of that was, uh, $5.7 million. And the proposal is that starting next fiscal year, uh, that shortfall would be first funded by, uh, the excess ERAF, which San Mateo was, San Mateo County is one of only five counties in the entire state that actually generates excess ERAF. So this, uh, and unfortunately, San Mateo County is the only county that has this issue where it has a property tax in lieu of VLF shortfall. So, uh, Councilmember Lee, to answer your question, um, it's best to look at it, uh, from a long, long-term perspective, uh, with the anticipation that over time, the remaining non-basic aid school districts, which backfill the property tax for property tax in lieu of VLF, will eventually all become basic aid, which means that there will be no backfill for VLF, which means that the entirety would need to be backfilled by excess ERAF. And we're awaiting, um, an estimate from the county controller's office for every, um, taxing entity in San Mateo County. Uh, for the city of San Mateo, based on analysis that they did, uh, for the current fiscal year, based on the current composition of, of non-basic aid school districts, the impact for the current fiscal year would be $1.27 million.
Okay. That's what I remembered. It's about one, over one, just over $1 million. Um, okay. Thank you and appreciate everyone bearing with me. It's, um, it's 4:30 in the morning for me over here. So moving a little slower. Thank you.
I just, can you explain, Director Lee, the difference between whether the kind of thing, the sales tax, um, that they're technically considered sort of a regressive tax? Is that right?
In terms of comparison between the real property transfer tax and-
Yeah.
-sales tax, the notion that sales tax is more regressive than the real property transfer tax.
And what, what is meant by that, to be regressive?
Uh, in terms that impacts more of the, um, disposable income for those of lower income than those, uh, with higher incomes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay.
I had, sorry, I had, I had one more.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, so, um, Dr. McLaren, do you mind bringing up that slide that shows the, um, the breakdown of the real property transfer tax at the $3 million threshold?
Yeah, I can bring that up. Bear with me one second.
So, um, not to design a new ballot measure on, on, from, from DS, but, uh, it occurred to me that you were talking about the challenges of, um, of space, you know, in terms of the word count that were allowed and, um, and how having a three-tiered structure, um, sort of works against that and, um, and us being able to more clearly articulate where the, the money is going and how that matches community need. And, um, and I was wondering if you have sort of a, an opinion or can speak to, um, what, you know, based on, based on your knowledge in this exercise polling, if we were to consider doing a, um, a two-tier, for example, at over $5 million and over $10 million, um, do you think that that would in a significant way change the outcome of, um, the real property transfer tax polling results and its feasibility?
Yeah. I mean, I think that number one, just by simplifying the tier structure, you would have more of your 75 words available to describe how the funds will be spent. That in and of itself will be an advantage, right? Because they'll have, you know, at the end of the day, you, in a 75-word ballot statement, you essentially have the price tag and you have what it is you can achieve with that price tag in terms of the benefits or the services. And so you'll have more space there available to talk about the benefits and how the funds would be used, you know, relative to just describing how the tax would be levied. So you have that advantage. Um, and obviously raising it to 5 million would exempt a lot of properties, um, you know, and most residential properties. And so, you know, you might have some folks who have homes that are in the three and a half million range that they don't, you know, they are willing to support this, but not if it applies to their house kind of scenario, right? So you're, you're, you're picking off, this is only going to apply to a, a very small percentage of the total properties in the community. And so that could be an advantage.
Right.
The, 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 I, there, I guess I would say that on top of that though, regardless of where you set that threshold, there is a certain amount of education that has to happen so that people understand what it is you're asking the vote on because they, you know, these aren't sort of typical types of tax measures that are out there. They don't see these every day like they do, you know, people get used to the idea of a sales tax. They understand what a parcel tax is. They understand, you know, to some degree they understand what a bond is. Um, but this is a little different. And so you, you'd want to make sure you educate on that.
Mm-hmm. Because I mean, if you look at, even if we were to tax, um, a point 5% of total transactions, which would be at the 10 million and above threshold, um, we would be able to, um, net almost $5 million annually, $4.8 million. Um, and so, you know, I think, I think that there was really good intentions in, um, in, in designing a tiered structure, but because of the constraints of, of the ballot measure design, um, and then the additional education, you know, I, um, I think that there, there may be an, I, an opportunity here to consider a simplification, um, uh, and that would, would, um, would, would change the, the margins of success significantly and still be, um, a very, um, a very solid revenue enhancement opportunity, um, that could reap, you know, nearly $5 million annually. So, um, I think, um, I'm, actually, I should probably preserve comments, but anyway, it's helpful to hear your, your thoughts on, on the benefits of simplification.
Okay. Was that your final question, Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Um, in the interest of time, because we do have another item, I'm going to pass it along to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
I have no comments in the room. And is there anybody on the Zoom call? Raise your hand now. Okay, we have one, uh, person wanting to comment. Rayanne Moshe-Tashemi, please go ahead.
Good evening, San Mateo City Council, Honorable Mayor Bonilla, Honorable Deputy Mayor Papin. Thank you for, um, your consideration of this item. I just wanted to throw in my support for a revenue measure. Um, I am not as well-steeped in the intricacies of the selection of what type of measure and, um, what tiered structure if a property, um, real property transfer tax measure were to be pursued. Um, but I would encourage some kind of measure to raise revenues in the city. Um, I definitely think that great points were raised about the regressivity of the tax as Deputy Mayor Papin mentioned and also, uh, Councilmember Lee's thoughts about how to simplify a tax structure. Um, nevertheless, I would, um, I would definitely leave it to the council to weigh the benefits of increased revenue from a sales tax measure as opposed to, um, a property tax, um, transfer measure. So I just wanted to throw in my support, say that there are definitely a lot of unfunded needs in the city and, uh, would throw in my support for a measure, um, on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other hands raised.
In that case, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for comments. Councilmember Goltz.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to appreciate, uh, and say thank you to Dr. McLaren for that excellent presentation, always great work and reliable because I, I get anecdotal stories all the time and they have, uh, the effect of really, uh, over-influencing my opinion or my perception of, of what the public is thinking. And it's good to know that, for example, a strong majority of people would be willing to tax themselves, uh, through the sales tax, which really everyone would pay. Um, and to see that kind of support for the projects that the city wants and needs to provide to our residents is, is really gratifying. Um, I'm thinking about what Director Lee said about our long-term need, about the, the, the shortfalls that could be in our near future. And, and I am open to, uh, trying to generate revenue that will allow us to provide for our essential services. We have such limited, very limited power to generate revenue. So this is really all we can do to exercise that authority. Um, looking at the two things before us, I'm, I'm open to the sales tax measure. It seems to have the, the broader support. Uh, I'd love to see us do it. Um, as a council, I'd love to see us really speak to our residents and support the, the strong majority, uh, close to 60% who want to see this because they, they see the merit to the, to the things that it would fund. Um, I, I think we can do that with, um, with a very solid belief that it would in fact pass and that people support this. Um, that short-term, that, that surplus, if you want to call it that, seems to be very, very short-term and limited. Um, but we, we would have to commit to, to supporting it and making sure that it gets over the, over the threshold. We, we all know better than most people that the, the capital improvement program i- is completely underfunded and those are really important projects that we want to see do. If, if we have a strong majority of this council to support the property transfer tax, I think it's, it would behoove us to make it simpler and, and do the over 10 million. Um, otherwise it would be harder to pass. Uh, and, and that is not regressive. That would be a progressive tax. Um, and it, it too would generate significant revenue. So those are the two things that I would be open to. Unfortunately, we are so limited in our power to generate revenue. These are our only opportunities and I worry about those, uh, shortfalls that are around the corner.
Thank you. Well, okay, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I'm, I'm just generally not a big fan at all of, of sales taxes. Um, I think they might be the most palatable, but, um, as we've noted, um, they are by far the most regressive kind of taxes we could possibly pass. And, and I, I just, out of all to the times to, if we were going to pass a tax like that or put a tax like that on the ballot and support it, I don't think, uh, right now is the best time, uh, especially when so many families and small businesses are struggling with high prices on, for just about everything, higher prices for just about everything. And, and especially at a time when our finances, whether we want to play with the word "dissurpluses" or not, um, are much better than we thought they were when we first started this discussion. Um, I, I would be in favor of, of a simplified property tax at, at 10, 10 million threshold. I think that makes a lot of sense because that's, that's basically gonna not, um, hit almost any residents, um, that hard. Uh, but what it will do is it will be taxing, um, really high windfall properties that, that, that perhaps somebody bought in the seventies and were, and were trying to sell them. And I think that that, um, would be a much wiser, more palatable way to raise, uh, city revenue for all the things that we want to fund as we saw in the, the survey. So that's where I stand. I do not support the sales tax, but I would support, uh, a 10 million threshold property tax.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor, are you ready?
Sure. Um, so first of all, I want to give my vote for the capital improvement projects. I think we can all agree on one item and that item is we have ones that we need done. Nobody cares any less or any more for them. We all would like to see what needs to be done for our community. But the real question is, how do you get there? Um, and I would concur with Councilmember Rodriguez. That's why I asked the question about a sales tax being regressive. These are tough times and it causes me great consternation. Um, so I, I, I concur that, you know, maybe we look at a property tax, uh, real property transfer tax in excess of 10 million and try to chip away into what we need for our capital improvement projects. But I think this is a time where we have to be very, very careful. Um, and especially taxes that would hit, as you mentioned, Director Lee, those that are of lesser means. Um, and I just don't want to be a part of that. So I would look at the real property transfer tax. Um, and, um, Dr. McLaren, if your results showed that we got a certain percent higher because we went higher on the threshold at 3 million, I'm optimistic that at 10 million, we would get there and we'd get there pretty rapidly that such a measure would pass. So that's where I am.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee?
Um, I, I support, um, both options and, um, and I, I am, I'm hopeful that a majority of not, um, a, all council members can get there, um, to support a revenue enhancement measure, um, that will bring in, you know, nearly $5 million annually to address our capital improvement needs and, um, and enhance services that our residents are, are crying out for. So I'm, um, I'm encouraged by this conversation.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Bonilla, before I let you guys continue on, I just wanted to ask if there was any interest. Um, we had took the liberty of putting together a slide on what some additional options for tiers might look like, um, including one that would be for no increase for properties sold for $5 million or less. Um, and then a 1% increase for properties sold for over $5 million, as well as a simplified version if they were sold, um, at $10 million or more. So I can share that if you'd like.
Thank you. Please do.
So this would be the option, um, for having just one new tier with properties sold for $10 million or under, um, not seeing any increase. Properties sold for $10 million or above would have a 1% increase and that's where that, uh, additional $4.8 million is expected to be generated based on 2021 sales.
And that's in a year when properties are selling, right?
And, uh, the next option would be for properties, um- And the next option would be for properties sold for $5 million or above. So I just wanted to bring that up in case the council was interested.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll go back and ask if there are any council members want to readdress these.
Can I just see the previous slide for a second?
The $10 million slide?
Yeah, this is the 10 million, so, but you still have a, okay, never mind.
No additional comments?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Gofolz? Councilmember Lee, any additional comments based on those slides you're saying?
I think, let's see, am I reading? Sorry, do you mind bringing that slide back up on the screen, the original one? There we go. So it's the difference, so basically, side by side, we're talking about over $5 million, the, we would be taxing, or the, the potential revenue would be $5.6 million, whereas if it was over $10 million, it would be $4.8 million. So, yeah, I mean, I think, I would be curious to hear from Dr. McClary, would, and I know that you haven't done the, you know, the in-depth analysis, but do you, do you feel like comfortable speaking to the feasibility of these two options?
You know, neither of them we tested. Obviously, as you go higher on these dollar amounts, you know, part of the thing you need to look at, I think, is the city has to decide, you know, what properties are they applying to and what's the revenue potential here, right? And, and from what I can tell, the, the vast, vast majority of the revenue benefit is going to come from properties $10 million and over when they sell.
True.
And that the 5 to $10 million increment doesn't look like, not on this slide, but I think on the other side, there's just not a lot of, there's not a lot of properties in that, in that increment that are, that are going to generate much in the way of, of, did I understand that right? Oh, no, wait. Oh, so that's 0 to 5 million. Okay, I just got confused by that slide. So over 5 million versus over 10 million, it seems like most of the action is in the 10 million and up.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So risk-reward situation, you're probably minimizing your risk and getting the vast majority of the reward at the 10 million and up frame, right?
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful too, hearing that was my takeaway also. Okay. Well, so then my feedback is to, it would be to pursue a 10 million and above threshold.
Did you have a comment over there, City Manager? No? Okay. Any other comments, Mr. Finance Director? No? Okay. Everybody else has weighed in. My thinking is that it looks like, the thinking amongst most council members here tonight is that the real property transfer tax being non-regressive is the best opportunity for us to possibly gain some revenues between, it looks like, well, maybe $5 million that we could be able to address some of our capital improvement needs with. I don't see us getting to four council members in support of anything unless we go with that right now. I would say that I would also be in support of a sales tax. I, I understand the regressive nature, but I also feel that the additional revenue that we would be able to get if that member measure were to pass would, would be important for us to be able to provide more and better services that the people indicated they would like us to provide. So that said, my recommendation, I want to get moving along so we get to the other one, is that we go with the property tax, and we ask the Finance Director to do some analysis for us and come back with, maybe talk with Dr. McClary and come back with a recommendation for us. We are having a special meeting on the 23rd. Maybe we could get a brief presentation there so that we could address that. But I think that's where we leave it right now. It's a study session. Does staff everything, everything they need?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bonilla. Our next steps will be to start working on drafting some potential ballot measures for council to consider, and we'll be sure to return as soon as we're able.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Okay, that said, we're off to item two tonight. I hope, I hope we have enough time for the presentation from One Shoreline. Yeah, we got about 16 minutes, so I hope we have enough time for that.
My name is Dave Pine. I'm a member of the Board of Supervisors. I'm speaking tonight as Chair of One Shoreline, the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. I want to thank Councilmember Papin for her service on our board, one of our seven board members. Our CEO is with us tonight, Len Maderman, who will make our presentation, so I'll just say a couple of comments. We all know about the severity of the sea level rise risk in our county. We're number one in the state in terms of potential exposure, and we formed One Shoreline in order to create an entity that could deal with these issues across jurisdictional lines, an entity that could develop expertise, because this issue will be with us for the long run, and an entity that would be in a position to competitively seek funding from federal and state sources. So we have a couple of years under our belt now. We have a number of accomplishments that Len will, will speak to. In the interest of time, I'll go ahead and just turn the floor over to Mr. Maderman.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Will you be loading the PowerPoint? Nope. Azalea will be loading the PowerPoint. Okay, thank you. Or you'll, you'll advance it, okay. Good evening. My name's Len Maderman. As Supervisor Pine just mentioned, I run the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. Dave Pine is the Chair of our board, and Diane Papin is one of the five city council members that are on our board. Send thank you for, to Ms. Papin for her service. Okay, so I'll go through this super quickly because it looks like we have 15 minutes, and you can keep advancing it. Azalea, the many studies over many years regarding vulnerability of the county, including our transportation sector, our housing sector, our utilities, our fresh water, et cetera, and we're the most vulnerable county, you can, no, we're the most, I'll try to catch up to you. We're the most vulnerable county in California to the first three feet of sea level rise in terms of damage, property damage, the population affected, including underrepresented populations, number of homes and contaminated sites. Basically, the way we think about it is if you're east of Skyline Boulevard and you flush a toilet, you drive on Highway 101, you drink hetchy water, you use electricity or natural gas, this is an issue that affects you. And if you're on, obviously, if you also like our beaches or our marshes on the Bayside or Pacific beaches, and then if you're on the coast side, Highway 101 is also significantly impacted. State legislation established One Shoreline in 2019. We started in January 1 of 2020 as the first independent government agency focused on this issue west of the Mississippi River, and we take a holistic view to the threats, meaning not just kind of traditional flooding threats of a 50-year storm or 100-year storm, but looking at, you can pause for a second, but looking at us, at, you know, what we've seen this winter essentially, which is two atmospheric rivers, and the rest of it was pretty much drought. And so most people who have thought about this, climate scientists say that's the new normal for us, and so that's what we're designing our projects to, are these major events that punctuate no rain. Also, of course, the threat of sea level rise. We have a holistic view to our objectives, meaning we, we look at project, at water not just as something that is a liability that should be walled off from the community, but something that should be integrated in the community, both in terms of the Bay Shoreline, Pacific Coastline, as well as the creeks that flow through our cities. A holistic view at the geography as well, and that means, as Supervisor Pine said, that we, we look multi-jurisdictionally in, in all of the work that we do. Here's a snapshot of most of the county, and it shows many of the projects, the ones in blue are ones that One Shoreline is the lead agency on, and the ones in yellow we're partners to, and the ones in purple are, are potential projects. And there are a couple of projects that are in orange, San Francisco Airport and Foster City, that other entities are taking the lead on, that we're looking to connect our work to. Azalea? Resilience projects, the way we think of it, should be large enough to collect, connect problems for decades among multiple jurisdictions, and small enough to be manageable by one lead agency. This doesn't mean that they're small. The project at Burlingame and Millbrae is now the largest sea level rise project in the state, but it does mean that it's, it's a project that one entity like One Shoreline can actually deliver on. Azalea? Thank you. One Shoreline focuses on long-term value. As I mentioned, multi-jurisdictional and multi-benefit, meaning not just flood protection, ecosystem restoration, building natural infrastructure. So if you think about it, our marshes help to protect our communities, and we should be protecting our marshes at the same time, and, and locally supported with clear roles for the cities, for One Shoreline, for the county, and for other districts. My priority relates to funding and financing. I will talk about, I guess, the financing at this moment. So we think about resilience. It has many benefits for the private sector. It reduces uncertainty. It reduces insurance premiums and requirements. It, it reduces operating costs. It also increases things. It increases, increases value for the property, increases project lifespans, it increases bond ratings, increases ESG or environmental social governance ratings. So there are many benefits to resilience, and what we're trying to do is capture those benefits and put those towards the capital costs of resiliency. And the area that we're focused on doing that first is in Burlingame, and that is basically putting land use and land rights in service to this resilient solutions. Azalea? Thank you. Okay, so our priorities for this year and next include the completion of our first construction project. This was a project that benefited five mobile home parks in the cities of Redwood City and, and the county, and it's really a proof of concept for the multi-jurisdictional approach. There was a decade of planning that went into this project, and One Shoreline was handed the project in 2020, and by May of 2021, we completed the SEQA document, completed permitting, completed land rights acquisition, and put together MOU of funding among the three cities and the county. And project was started in 2021 and completed just recently. It also includes some state money. Going down the list, I'll talk about multi-jurisdictional projects in a second, basically on the next item. Working with cities to update key planning documents. So that's general plans, specific plans, and zoning ordinances. Think about it, cities already have requirements for development that occurs in today's FEMA floodplain. Shouldn't cities also have requirements for development that will exist in tomorrow's Regarding permitting, on the next slide, on the next bullet, the permitting regime was developed 50 years ago during a static environment. We're now in a rapidly changing environment, and what we're doing is emphasizing to policymakers that permits us recognize the changing environment and the societal benefits of resilience. Finally, last bullet. As you probably know, the county is exploring placing a parcel tax on the ballot to fund resilience. That was mentioned just recently. Resilience to the water and wildfire-related impacts of climate change. Here's a list of some of the types of projects that would be done if this were to be put on the ballot by the county. Sea level rise, flooding, erosion, regional stormwater projects, drought, and then on the wildfire side, forest management, vegetation management, detection alerts and evacuations, planning, training, and public education. And then finally, the development of emergency evacuation centers. This parcel tax would be a per-square-foot tax, and that is not a regressive tax. That is actually the opposite of a regressive tax, because the larger homes and the larger businesses would pay more than the smaller homes and the smaller businesses on a, if it's a per-square-foot basis. Yeah. Okay. Emerging multi-jurisdictional project, basically in 2010, the cities that make up Redwood Shores were notified that they needed to raise their levies to get out of the floodplain. They did that in 2011, 2012, and then they were notified in 2020. They needed to do it again. And so, you can advance the slide. There's a, looking at the area of Redwood Shores, and I want to note that the city of San Mateo jurisdiction is just to the, just the upper left of this image. Looking at this area of Redwood Shores, One Shoreline would take on this project, which would include really benefits to San Carlos, Redwood City, Belmont, the county, and that portion of San Mateo. And we would take it to, we would build the project in a way that any FEMA letter coming, wouldn't really come for decades, because we would build it much higher than the current FEMA requirements. Azalea? So I'll go through this really quickly. You can advance the slide. Basically, San Francisco International Airport, when it was built, the creeks had to be rerouted around it, and that's caused some of the flooding issues that we see today in San Bruno and Millbrae, and then on the shoreline of South San Francisco and Burlingame. They're very susceptible to the impacts of high tides and sea level rise. Azalea? So this is a regional project. So San Francisco Airport has really two options as part of their shoreline protection program, either protect the interior side of the airport, which is quite a long stretch, or they can, as an option to that, they can tie into protection to the north and the south in Millbrae, Burlingame, and then on the north side to San, South San Francisco. Azalea? Thank you. So what we're doing is working with the cities of Millbrae and Burlingame and South San Francisco to establish common objectives and assumptions, share technical information, costs, utilize each other's land rights, all in service to a common protection project. Our objective for that is the FEMA 100-year elevation of the bay plus six feet of sea level rise. That's equal to about 10 feet above today's high tide. Azalea? This is what we're working on with Burlingame in regards to planning and zoning. Burlingame leaders last year updated their zoning ordinance for the first time since literally the late 60s, and they came to us asking if we could help them work on a portion of the zoning ordinance related to sea level rise. We did that, and the zoning ordinance now includes requirements for developments to have buffer zones from the shoreline, incorporating protection infrastructure on their properties, first floor elevations three feet above the FEMA floodplain, disclosing all hazards in regards to real estate transactions. And, and so we're working with the developers as part of a regional project, and the regional project essentially analyzes and guides those solutions, and the development community fits into that envelope as these developments are moving forward. And, you know, our, our, why is this such a high priority for us? Basically, we expect our new development and infrastructure to last for decades while climate change impacts grow. Planning and building for that now is easier and cheaper than retrofitting for it later, and the longer we wait to institute these requirements into our zoning ordinances and general plans and specific plans, as was actually discussed in the last agenda item you just talked about, the longer we wait to do this, the law, the more expensive and more difficult it will be. There are other cities that are, have these triad of, of, of opportunities, meaning specific plans or zoning ordinance updates coming up, major developments and projects that are regional in scope, East Palo Alto, Redwood City, San Carlos, South San Francisco, and Brisbane among them. Azalea? Last slide. So One Shoreline's Bay Program aligns and connects protection enhancement of the entire 53 miles of the Bay coast, of Bay Shoreline of San Mateo County. In yellow, you see project areas that are either led by or in discussion with One Shoreline as of today, and, and there are a few gaps in there, as you can see, and, and so we look forward to working with the city of San Mateo, as well as the areas of the other gaps, to really have a knit-together, a connected shoreline that we have no regrets over and protects us for decades into the future. Thank you very much. Be glad to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Okay, good. In that case, thank you very much for the presentation. We're going to close this meeting. Oh? Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you have a comment but not a question?
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Public comment, please.
Rich Hedges, please go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank very much Supervisor Pine and Vice Mayor Papin for all the work they've done on this. I just see, I'm very, I'm obviously going to vote for this. I think it's very important, and I'm very charged about it. But the one thing I don't see mentioned in this is funding for dredging of creeks and flood channels that will increase the volume. I remember very clearly when San Mateo Creek almost flooded, when we had I remember very clearly when San Mateo Creek almost flooded, when we had one of those events where the wind was coming out of the east, we'd had heavy rains, and the reservoir was full and they were letting water loose, and it came within verifiable fraction of an inch of flooding. Since then, we've raised the flood vol, but we're on San Mateo Creek, but we're now tasked with FEMA to raise it again. So I would like to see some discussion about these channels that carry water that could easily back up and flood, about creating a little more, a little more volume for them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have no other hands raised.
Thank you very much. Then I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Do we have some comments?
Oh, I'd just like to thank, it's been an honor to work with both of you, and thank you for being here tonight and expressing the risk that is at hand and the hope that we will be able to make our communities as resilient as possible in light of the threat. So thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. And any other councilmembers? No. I just want to say that it's really important work. I want to thank everybody that's involved in doing this. I wish we would have got started 10 years ago, but thank you all very much. Okay, with that said, I believe I will now adjourn the special meeting, and we will move in about five minutes to the regular meeting. Thank you very much.